The next round.
That's alright. It would've been something.
Everybody, welcome. Welcome, and please rise for our Budge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with all, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a quarter. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen. Please be seated. We'd like to call this meeting to order on April 17th at 6:30, 31 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Aldermen Braun. Barubi.
Here.
Peccararo.
Here.
Tylec.
Here.
President Zizilka.
Here.
Also present is Mayor Arthur G. Pappas and City Attorney Luke Brown. Today is Student Government Day. So, as shadows, we had Harrison Mall as the mayor, Nina Marinca as the city attorney, Noel Nickerson as the city clerk treasurer, Jacob Thompson as the Third Ward Alderman and Council President, Rosie Kiefer as the Alderman-at-large, Austin Spatarico as an Alderman-at-large, Brandon Lynch as the First Ward Alderman, Madison Heiss as the Second Ward Alderman, Angela Stevick as the City Judge, William Guagliardo as the Appointed City Judge, Tatum Gonzalez as Assistant City Attorney, Alex Euler as the Building Inspector and Code Enforcement, Jenna Hubler as the City Accountant, Nick Prisbowski as the City Engineer, Kira Dewey as the Director of Youth Recreation and Parks, Leah Matt as the Fire Chief, Alex Roy as the Mayor's Assistant, Ryder Uplinger as the Police Chief, Colin Christeck as the Community Development, Marissa Smith and August Janda as the City Assessor.
Does the mayor have any opening comments?
I would like to thank City Hall for hosting us today and wish my peers best of luck.
Now at this time, if there are any agenda items, and agenda items only, please come up to the mic and state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone and students.
Good evening.
My name is Sonia Duzza, and I reside at 123 Miller Street in North Tonawanda. On the agenda, I see increase in city attorney salary. I would like to say right off the bat, when Mr. Lu- Luke Brown applied for this job, he knew what the salary was. If he thought it was not enough, he should have not taken the job. Doesn't that make sense? Also, I would also say, after a year or two, if he shows to be for the people who he represents, who elected him, if he's doing a good job, by all means, give him accordingly his compensation. Otherwise, forget it. I would also like to ask, and I've been wanting to do this for, in recent times, I thought, "I've gotta ask this." I remember reading in the New York Times, I think it was, some years ago, the attorney, I think it was the Attorney General, there's an article on it, said, to make it short, "He represents the people." He doesn't represent special interests or otherwise. He represents the people. I think that's common sense, my way of looking at for the people, by the people. So I would like to ask Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, do you agree that the city attorney represents the people?
No, I represent the city of North Tonawanda.
Would you use the microphone, please?
No, I represent the city of North Tonawanda, is who I represent. I represent the city as a corporate entity. So that's who I represent. My client is the city of North Tonawanda as a corporate entity. That's who I represent.
My thinking is, it's not the corporate entity which voted you to be the city attorney, but the people themselves.
But they voted me to represent the corporate entity. It's who they voted me to represent. That's what the job is.
Well, and I'm saying to you, do you agree with me that the city attorney is to represent the people? In the, for example, in the zoning ordinance, it says, "The mission purpose is to protect the safety, the security, the health." And when that's not happening, it's up to you to let it be known, "This is wrong, I'm representing you, this is what has to be done." I'm not gonna be laboring, but I appreciate your, at least, your thought on my question. Do you wanna add anything more? Please do, but I think this is so, so basic. In the community, if we don't have anybody looking out for the taxpayers, the residents, who is there? Besides the common man? Regarding the Building Inspector, Roman numeral 19, award of bid for 2018 weed cutting contract for North Tonawanda. I remember in years past, property in my neighborhood specifically, it was so outrageous, it looked worse at that site and in the neighborhood before it was cut. And so I'm wondering, when you have a subcontractor taking care of these violations, if it's someone who's gonna leave the place tidy? Not as if some maniac came over and threw all the grass and brush on the streets and in the site? So I would let you know that I'd like to see somebody who's really takes pride in their work. Thank you.
Sonia, I waited until you were finished, because I didn't wanna take any of your time away. But I will tell you, I think I'm a darn good judge of character.
Is this appropriate right now?
Absolutely, because you raised an issue of Luke Brown, and I'm saying that I think I'm a good judge of character, and I think Luke deserves every benefit.
I didn't talk about character, sir. I didn't talk about character.
Okay, but I'm just saying that I think he deserves every penny that we're gonna give him. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Carl Bauer, I reside at 1066 East Robinson Street, and I think this is great that the students are getting a taste of all of this. I wanted to just comment on the previous speaker's first issue, and I realize I'm restricted to three minutes, okay? I have met Mr. Brown on a couple of occasions. He is not a friend, he is not a neighbor. I've had some dealings with him in my capacity as the President of Twin Cities Meals on Wheels. I am not politically attached, I'm actually a Democrat, so I mean, I don't even fall in favor of the fact that four of the five Aldermen are Republican. What I did wanna comment on relative to the previous speaker is that generally, people in the capacity of city attorney and other positions as such aren't paid what they can make in the private sector. And if I'm not incorrect, the wages that are being paid for our city attorney, and I think it's paralleled and exemplified in other examples of civic position, is that North Tonawanda, as good as we try to be, is somewhat behind the wage scale on a number of things. So, before we go and pass judgment and make judgments on only having had the current city attorney in his capacity for a short time, let's keep in mind that, you know, we don't wanna have a turnover, and we want to have some continuity. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Alberta Roman, I live at 462 Walk Road. And lovely to see all the young people here, and other people of different ages as well. And I admire people who ask for what they want. So I'm speaking about the city attorney's request for a wage increase, if I'm understanding it correctly. As I read it, I had a couple of questions occur to me. And that is, how long has it been since there's been a raise for the position, city attorney? And and the other thought that occurred to me was, why aren't the other people asking for a raise? So if you have any information about if that's available, or where I could find it, I would love it.
2003. Was the last time the city attorney position had a salary increase.
Thank you, and do you know about other, the other people, whose wages were listed?
So, the other attorneys?
No. On the there was a listing of-
I don't know the other elected officials.
Yeah. Okay. Is that information available?
Sure, we can find out.
Where is that?
I'd have to probably get it from the city accountant when the last time, all the rest, but I think it was similar to 2003. But I'm not 100% sure, I'd have to get it from the city accountant.
Thank you.
Sean Nickerson, 324 Weefield Street. I was a former city attorney, and I can state that, as Mr. Brown indicates, regardless of who's in that office, that salary hasn't been raised since 2003. As far as the rest of the elected officials, it's my understanding that those salaries were set in 2000, when the current charter came into effect. And those salaries haven't been raised either. And, just my own opinion, I believe that those salaries should be looked at as well, because most certainly, all those, these folks who've been elected are certainly doing it for the salary. But it certainly should be looked at as far as all the elected officials, and look at some of the comparables with other communities and what they're paying their elected officials. There hasn't even been a cost of living increase for a full-time mayor, and again, that salary was set in 2000.
Are there any other questions regarding agenda items? Thank you, we will move on to our agenda.
Can I have an approval of the minutes of the regular session, April 3rd, 2018?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second that.
That the minutes of the regular session meeting held, April 3rd, 2018, be approved as circulated and filed in the city office, in the office of the city clerk. Proof of publication published 3318, 31618, and 32318. Legal notice, bid request for landscape contractors for grass, weed, and brush cutting Builders Inspector, Building Inspector's office. Proof of publication published 328 and 4418. Legal notice for the collection of the 2018 city taxes, City Clerk Treasurer.
I make a motion to receive and file.
I second that.
We have a motion and second. All in favor? Alright. All opposed? Motion carried.
Communications from city officials from their attorney regarding increase in city attorney's salary.
I will motion for the letter request $80,000, I will only allow up to $75,000.
I second that.
On the question, I would like to make a motion that we table agenda items 2.1 and 2.2 due to the fact that we, as an elected body, have not met as a whole to discuss the city attorney's requested salary increase. This motion to table these two items does not reflect my view on whether or not the city attorney should receive a raise. This motion only reflects my concern that we, as a council, have not publicly discussed the matter as a group prior to this meeting. Therefore, I believe agenda item 2.1 and 2.2 should be approved, should not be approved until we do so. Can I get a second to this motion?
You're in a motion and a second, but the first part.
Motion table fails. I have a motion and a second for the original motion. All in, any questions? Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, can I have a roll call?
Aldermonds Braun.
Aye.
She's absent.
Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Nay.
Zizilka.
Aye.
Motion passed. Motion carried.
From the attorney regarding amendment to North Tonawanda City Code, Chapter 62B, salaries of elected city officials.
I make a motion.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Can I have a roll call?
Aldermonds Braun.
Absent.
Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Nay.
Zizilka.
Aye.
We have a, or, motion carried.
From the Clerk Treasurer regarding removal of 340 Bryant Street from the appropriate interim foreclosure proceeding.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Aldermonds Braun. Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Aye.
Zizilka.
Aye.
Motion carried.
From the Clerk Treasurer regarding permission to close Bennett Street, Sunday, May 20th, 2018, for a block party.
I make a motion.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From the Superintendent of Water and Wastewater regarding professional engineering services for water treatment plant adjustable speed driver placement.
I make a motion.
I second that.
Before we make a motion, motions, I, can we hear from Bill Davignan on this?
Before we make a motion on this, can we hear from Bill Davignan on this?
Thank you, Council President, Alderpeople and Mayor. This issue's been around for a while, it's our backup generator, it's a water treatment plant. What runs the pumps, so after the generator kicks on, is these variable frequency drive electrical units, that what they do is they actually save a lot of money on electrical costs, because they run the pumps on an as-needed basis. Instead of running them full throttle, it basically runs them on demand. So if we have a certain level of demand for that motor, it'll run at the necessary level, it saves us a tremendous amount of money. Plus, the ones we currently have, two of them are over 30 years old, and the other two are above 25. Can't even get parts for them anymore. So while we're putting in the new generator and doing the electrical work with that, we thought we would add this to that project, because this would roll us right into Phase 1 of our capital improvement plan that we're starting now, or not starting, but we're picking an engineering firm hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Once we start that project, this would be Phase 1 anyway, so we're just kinda getting ahead of that game. And we thought it'd be more cost-effective to do it all at once. And we're also looking to apply for three or four different grants on this one. And to apply for the grants, we wanted to incorporate this into the package. Instead of applying for 1.2 million, we'd now be applying for 1.7 million. So it is increasing the cost of the project by 500,000. But usually, when you apply for a bigger grant, you tend to get more grant funds, and that's what we're hoping for. If we do not get the grant funds, we're leaving the option open to pull this off of that project and do it down the road when we can afford it better, so it depends on the grant money. So we're leaving this open, kind of like a buffet style, if you will. This project's gonna go beyond on. So that's the way we're really pursuing this, and I really appreciate your support on this, because if we can do it all at once, who's actually gonna save us money on the construction costs? We're already gonna have everybody there doing this work. So, for us, it's kind of a win-win, and it's already gonna get the city started on this long-term capital plan that we're undertaking. Is there any questions? No, thank you. Alright, thank you, Bill.
We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call?
Aldermonds Braun.
Absent.
Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Aye.
Zizilka.
Aye.
Motion carried.
From the accountant regarding payment of the abstract of claims dated April 17th, 2018.
I motion for this.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call?
Aldermonds Braun.
Absent.
Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Aye.
Zizilka.
Aye.
Motion carried.
From the police chief regarding reappointment of Michelle Day as a Commissioner of Deeds for the city of North Tonawanda.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From the Building Inspector regarding award of bid for the 2018 weed cutting contract for North Tonawanda.
I make a motion.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call?
Aldermonds Braun.
Absent.
Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Aye.
Zizilka.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Monthly reports for the Clerk Treasurer and the Senior Citizen Center.
I make a motion to receive and file.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Can I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Communications from others. From Natalie Brown regarding permission to close Oliver Street from Robinson to Shank on Saturday, August 4th, 2018, for the Oliver Street Art Festival.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From the NT National Little League regarding permission to have their annual opening day parade, Saturday, May 19th, 2018.
I make a motion.
I second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From Kyle Nickerson regarding permission for Scout Troop 184 to have a campout in Pine Woods Park on Friday, April 20th, to Saturday, April 21st, 2018.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From OLC Church regarding permission to have their Feast Day celebration, Sunday, August 26th, 2018.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From the Latin American Motorcycle Association regarding permission to waive the park fee to have a family event at Veterans Park on Saturday, August 25th, 2018.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From Carl Heilmann regarding permission to close the Thompson Street Durkey Bridge on Saturday, May 5th, 2018, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, for practice runs for the Soapbox Derby for youth and mentors.
I make a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
From Peter Chenier regarding permission to hold the annual Canal Fest, Sunday, July 15th, to Sunday, July 22nd, 2018.
I make a motion.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can I have a roll call?
Aldermonds Braun.
Absent.
Barubi.
Aye.
Peccararo.
Aye.
Tylec.
Aye.
Zizilka.
Aye.
Motion carried. At this point, if there's anyone that would like to speak on other city business, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
Alex Demirovsky, 1383 Sherwood. I would just like to, on behalf of the North Tonawanda Recreation Department, thank Ms. Katie Harrington for kinda putting this together from the school aspect. I'd like to thank all the Aldermen and all the city department heads that had a role in allowing the kids to shadow and really to kinda take them under their wing for the day, and teaching them everything that's going on with the city. Specifically, I wanna thank- city. Specifically, I want to thank Mr. Pecoraro, Mr. Berubi, for coming in the morning along with Mr. Andres and kind of running through a common council with these kids and prepping them for the agenda and really showing them how city government works and how things have to be voted on. A lot of time was put into this by those, those people that were mentioned, so I just wanted to say thank you. And there's food and refreshments at the end of the night for you guys, and there'll be a slideshow as well. So, thanks again.
Peter Chenier, sixteen sixty-six Adrian Drive, North Tonawanda. President of the Canal Fest of the Tonawandas. I want to thank the council and city for supporting us in this year's event. And hopefully the weather be with us and we'll have a outstanding event, outstanding and safe event. Thank you again.
Good evening. My name's Richard Beday of the four ninety-nine Whitmer Road. And the first thing I'd like to do is commend the folks from the DPW Department on the last wind event we had here within the last week or so. It was a great job. There's a lot of trees down, limbs, and I think they really took care of the problem. The other thing I'd like to discuss is the drainage on Whitmer Road. With the last weather event, we had another experience of flooding Sunday over to Monday. I know there's been some effort made in the past with the repair of Donner Creek, and that's been kind of held up because of inclement, inclement weather over the last couple of years. Also, lack of easements. Now, we can't do much about that. But, I mean, the issue is, the only way for this water to be relieved is, is most of it goes into the sanitary sewer. And we all end up making it. And in order to alleviate this problem, I'm wondering if something can be done along the terrace where the old ditches were that were covered with, or, you know, they had pipes installed and covered up. But there's still sections of open ditch, and you can see the difference in diameter of the pipe. You know, if you, if you take a walk down the street, you'll see the pipe that's exposed. Some of it's a foot, some of it is quite a bit smaller. I mean, it's, it's inconsistent. A lot of the stuff was installed by the homeowners. Anyway, you know, we have this vacuum truck in the city, and it has the capability, like a Boriscope, to TV, to examine the condition of the pipe, or if it's even open or not. And I'm wondering if we can't utilize that piece of equipment to at least assess what's going on that's out of here. And I live at four ninety-nine. Before they paved the street two years ago, there's a large culvert that runs diagonally across the street, and they found that that thing was almost totally plucked. And it's a, it's a big thing. It's, it's two or three foot, it's rectangular, for whatever reason, I don't know, but it is. And they partially cleared it, and they had to use a contractor because it was so, so badly obstructed. So I was kind of curious what the condition of the rest of the pipe is, the length of Whitmer Road. So I was hoping that for yous to your attention, maybe we can get some activity out there again. And thank you very much.
Sir, that is part of my ward. I will take a look at it, get together with city engineer and stuff so that we can see if it comes out.
Yeah, I've had discussions with Dale in the past. And I'm retired. I'm available. He knows how to get ahold of me, I think. And, yeah, I'll, I'll take anybody to work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kristen Wasold in one ninety-two Walter Drive. My question is, through an indirect social media post, I had found out that the dog warden of North Tonawanda had been terminated. My question is, was this going to be released at all by the city to the public? And how was that going to be done? And when? Because it ended up turning into quite a social media frenzy, the way it was found out. And, you know, it's, the stuff that's out there just isn't great. And if it would come, I think, from the city, it may have alleviated some of the stuff that was posted that way. So that's my question, I guess.
Ma'am, we normally don't release personnel issues to the public. People were instructed that if there was an issue with dogs, to contact the police.
When was this, though? Because the last instruction was to contact the dog warden. And then when people were trying to return, were unable to, it was only through social media that they found out that she was terminated. So my question is, if it wasn't found out that way, and nobody was in the office here yet, as of, you know, whatever time people come in, what were people supposed to do? Like, you know, why is it that you wouldn't release to the public so people would know how and who to contact, instead of via finding this out through social media? I don't understand why there wouldn't be transparency, just to let the city know what to do, because it would alleviate. I mean, comments and threats were made to police officers. I mean, it, it makes absolutely no sense to me that, in just saying, you know, the dog warden is not here anymore, whatever the situation is, doesn't have to be, oh, she's fired, she let go, she quit, whatever it is. But if anyone needs this, something should have come from the city somehow to the public and told them who to contact, and it shouldn't have come out the way it did.
If comments and threats were made to the police, I would hope the police would follow up.
Well, not to the police, but their comments may, meaning, like, not that they're going to hurt the police, but comments being disrespectful or inappropriate. And none of that would have happened if something would have just been transparent and let the public know about what, what to do in this event.
So, Kristen, I, I actually agree with what you're saying. I think we need to relook at our procedures for people leaving, whether they're retiring, or they want to find another job, or they get let go of sorts. A lot of other companies sometimes, company, you know, we used to work company earlier in the late, require a two-month leave time, right? So people can situate an individual to then fill the position in the appropriate amount of time. So to some degree, I think there's, there's.
I'm not asking if people are terminated or whatever, if something goes on in there. They should just be in freedom. Their position is no longer here. This is what you need to do if this happens. And because that was, you know, just completely, and issues then had come up in the meantime, until people found out how to do, in the advent of social media, this really shouldn't be what's going on on the North Tonawanda pages. I mean, it just shouldn't be. I mean, we should want better for our city and the people here. So let's not have people, you know, tagging and making comments to city officials, you know, public people, police officers, and they're in this banter. It just didn't need to exist. Over just really, the initial post was, who is the dog warden and how do we reach her? And they turned into mass chaos, because nobody could reach anyone here yet because no one was available. I mean, it was before work time.
Kristen, when, when she goes on vacation, there's never any issue with people getting in touch with the police? And they don't, people don't know when she's on vacation? So there's, there's never an issue with people contacting with an issue with the dog?
Well, I'm not saying people don't contact the police.
But that's how, it's their job right now.
Right. It is their job now, but people did not know, so they were looking to contact her.
But even if she was gone, it's still.
It's vast out there that there was there.
Like I said, she's gone on vacation for a week, and they automatically, the police have.
I don't know that they automatically, you don't know that they automatically.
Well, I don't know.
They may have directly somehow found out to do that. Okay, she's on vacation. That's my point.
Zach Dinek, three eighty-four Robinson Street. On behalf of the school district, I really just want to thank you personally with the city for continuing this event with us. It's a huge undertaking. I was a benefactor of this event when I was a student several years ago. I made sure that I was a part of it all four of my years of high school. And it takes a lot of working together between different departments and different organizations to put this on. And I hope all the students enjoyed it. And I hope that you'll be sitting up there in the future, or even in my seat on the school board in the future, being based off of this experience you had today. So I hope you've all enjoyed it. Thank you. Are there any other comments about city business to be stated?
My name is Sonia Duzo, and I reside at one twenty-three Miller Street. I was taken back to the eighties with that last exchange. That's how it used to be. When somebody spoke, then there was a communicating back and forth. Mr. Berubi, thank you. This is how common councils used to be. I'd like to see that return and people having an exchange. We're not here to be adversarial. We care about our community. That's why we take the time to drop everything at home or elsewhere and come and speak here. I was intending actually to be in, in Buffalo. There is a land use discussion about the vision for Buffalo in their waterfront, one of the neighborhoods. But I did see the agenda, and I thought it was important to come here. I will follow up what's happening in Buffalo. Mr. Tyloc, I read in the, I think it was the extra, how you said that the Summer Street is high density and low income. It is not high density. I don't think there's anywhere is really in North Tonawanda that it's high density. When I think of high density, I think maybe the Perry, Perry Apartments in downtown Buffalo, huge buildings taking a lot of room. This is not high density. And I'm surprised you said that, because you're an architect. Honestly, I was.
Your comparison with Buffalo is definitely a different range.
I'm not saying we're Buffalo.
Right, but that was one of your examples, is talking about Buffalo. So the density in that area, in the Oliver Street area, because there are so many renters, it is on average higher than, say, Worlditzer Park, where they tend to not have as many people in one building. So in, in North Tonawanda, it is the higher density area. But yes, I agree. In, say, Buffalo compared, it is not as high of density. So that, that's the context that I was referring to.
Thank you. I hope you will deduct his comments from my speaker's portion. North Tonawanda is still a bedroom community. That means it's small. We, we don't, we're not like a big city, or, I, I used to say we're a village. Now I say it's, we're a shuttle. We're tiny. And so we want to really use the size, the capacity that we have here. And I would say to you, just because you're, we're small, it doesn't mean we're special. We have things in our community that other communities who are larger do not have. We have the magnificent, we have resources here, and we have constraints, but we have resources by themselves that could attract people here. But if we don't clean up the city, if we do not follow the purpose, the, the mission of the, the scope, the, the purpose of the zoning ordinance, we're going to continue to have neighborhoods like my neighborhood, because there was selective enforcement and deliberate indifference. There are neighborhoods in the city that have violations that have gone down. People have sold the properties. They did have them kept up, maintained, and consequently, people, landlords came in, people who wanted to make a quick buck, took over the neighborhoods. And my neighborhood is partially like that because the deliberate indifference in the building inspector for decades. Also, in my neighborhood, I want to put you on notice, again, I've said this a few years ago. In the neighborhood of Summer, Carruthers, Miller, Oliver Street, we have violations that have gone on for several years. I have spoken on this, and I've fallen on deaf ears, and it's gotten worse, not better. And this is not only acceptable, this needs to be exposed for what it is. We have, when CSX was doing their tracks, they dumped, they brought in soil from those tracks along Erie Avenue. They dumped it on Summer Street, west of North Marion, a residential neighborhood and property, and it's still there. I mentioned it when Mayor Ort was the mayor. That pile still sits there. We have, in that area, tall grass that's five, six feet tall. While I've come before the common council and said, this has to be maintained. It hasn't happened. The playground was the best tennis court in the city, and that's from the head of Recreation Department. There was an accident. A car went at the fencing of the courts, and the city received a check to pay for that damage. That never happened. These are some of the things that bring your neighborhood down. If you care, each of you have a neighborhood you, you live in. Take an interest in your neighborhood, because if you don't, the way things have been happening in North Tonawanda, not good. And that reminds me, another very important, I attended a, a planning commission meeting, and the city's consultant had mentioned about changing the waterfront zoning regulations, where they would change people's access, having that access, which is state mandated, to no more. What, a couple of the commissioners said, there should be access. And the planner said, well, we could, we could change that. I asked, who was the, the law firm? J. Phil Fleishman, which is now, has a different name. But take an interest in your community because what I've experienced since I was a young person, I used to come, eighteen, I, I came to the meetings, and it's not gotten better, it's gone downhill. So if you care about your neighborhoods, your communities, speak up, take an interest, speak up and speak out. Thank you so much. By the way, you look very engaged. I think you're a natural. Mr. President, Common Council. Do you agree?
Mr. Lukasik, you can speak from where you're, you're at.
Thank you very much, Alderman Pecoraro. My name is John Lukasik, four fifty-four Shape Street. And I'd like to follow up on the previous speaker. And I want to congratulate all the students that are here, listening, and are taking of the council session. And I hope you have learned, and I'm sure you're going to be learning. And I would challenge some of you students to follow up and become alderpersons. We have to move on. So we have to push out the older ones, and the new ones, they call. Maybe it's a wrong word, but I'm proud that they're here, that they're learning, and I expect maybe one or two of them to be sitting there eventually. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, John. Are there any other matters to discuss this moment? If not, we'll have closing comments. Does the mayor have any closing comments?
I would like to say thank you to Mrs. Harrington and Mr. Demarowski for putting this together today, as well as everyone else involved in city council and city hall. It was a tremendous event, and we're all very appreciative of this opportunity.
Does Alderman Braun is not here to, or does Alderman Braun have anything to say?
I would just like to thank Ms. Harrington and Mr. Demarowski for putting this together, and everyone else who helped. And I would also like to thank Donna Braun for allowing me to shadow her today.
Alderman Berubi.
I would also like to thank Alderman Berubi for allowing me to shadow. I would like to thank Mrs. Harrington and Mrs. Demar, or Mr. Demarowski for allowing this opportunity for all of us.
Alderman Pecoraro.
I would also like to thank Ms. Harrington and Mr. Demarowski for organizing Student Government Day, as well as my mentor, Mr. Pecoraro, for allowing me to shadow him today. It's been a tremendous experience and one that I will remember.
Alderman Tyloc.
I would like to greatly appreciate, say thank you to Ms. Harrington and to Mr. Dona, Demarowski. And I would like to, in a particular way, thank Austin Tyloc for allowing me to shadow. And I would like to, in a particular way, thank Austin Tylec for allowing me to shadow him today. It was a great day.
City Clerk Treasurer Dan Quinn.
I would like to thank City Clerk Treasurer Dan Quinn for letting me shadow him today. And I would also like to thank Ms. Harrington and Mr. Demerowski for organizing this event.
City Attorney Luke Brown.
I'm going to try to say this right. I'd like to thank Mrs. Harrington and Mr. Demerowski for organizing this. I think it's a really great opportunity, because I think a lot of this can't be learned in the classroom. And if it can, it's different to have a hands-on experience. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Brown, because I got to see what he's doing, and I've never had exposure to that. So it was a good experience, and I hope they keep doing it.
And I would like to thank Ms. Harrington for giving incentive to want to do this. She pulled together people to actually get people to do this. Mr. Demerowski for organizing this, and all the common council members who helped us get through this. At this time, meeting adjourned. I motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:18 p.m.